The Board will now come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Twenty, President, Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Clarence Anthony, the National League of Cities President, former mayor for 24 years in Florida, and we are so blessed to have him here today in the city of St. Louis to lead us in prayer.
Let us bow our heads. Dear God, we come to you this morning thanking you for yet another day and for another opportunity to serve the needs of the citizens of St. Louis that you entrusted us to represent. God, we ask that with these just responsibilities that you lead us and guide us and give us wisdom so that we will lead with grace, honor, and humility as we conduct the business of the city. Continue to be with us in these trying times and continue to show us how to lead together for the betterment of the city and the citizens of St. Louis. Let us also say amen.
That's a great prayer. Let's give him a big round of applause. We will suspend what our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the 18th, would you like to prostrate? Move for adoption out of courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on that motion,
Mr. President, members of the Board, it is certainly my honor today to stand here before you to present a resolution to Mr. Clarence Anthony. The sponsor of the resolution, Miss Alderwoman Marlene Davis, is not here yet, so as the floor majority leader, it's my responsibility to read the resolution to hear to you today. And luckily, I brought my glasses so I don't have to make up words. Whereas the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen would like to welcome Clarence Anthony, Executive Director and President of the National League of Cities of the City of St. Louis, and thank him for his years of dedication to his community and the communities across the country. And whereas Clarence Anthony served as the mayor of South Bay, Florida for 24 years, he is known as a creative and thoughtful leader in his community. He is considered an expert in citizen engagement and techniques that build a sense of community within cities. And whereas Clarence Anthony has been in the forefront of politics in the United States and internationally for over 20 years culminating with productive presidencies of the Florida League of Cities and the National League of Cities. And whereas the National League of Cities President Clarence Anthony serves as the chief spokesman, spokesperson, for the oldest and largest organization of municipal officials in the United States, representing more than 1,600 cities and towns as well as 49 state municipal leagues. And whereas prior to his appointment as Executive Director of the National League of Cities, Clarence Anthony served as the President of the Anthony Government Solutions, a consulting firm focused on providing solutions to government and private sector organizations on issues affecting the community, strategic vision, policy development, business development, and management restructuring. He holds a master's degree in public administration with specialization in city growth policy from Florida Atlantic University. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to welcome Mr. Clarence Anthony to the City of St. Louis, and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. And there is no better time or place here now at the Board of Aldermen meeting to present such a resolution to a man of both letters, responsibility, and achievement as it relates to municipalities throughout this country. It's our pleasure to present him this very large resolution in its frame here today on behalf of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Good morning again, and what an honor to be in St. Louis this morning. I'm Clarence Anthony, representing the National League of Cities. And for those of you who may not know who the National League of Cities, we represent 19,000 city, towns, and villages throughout America. We convene elected officials to be able to discuss best practices, but generally, our mission is about lobbying on behalf of cities in Washington, D.C. with the administration as well as agencies. So if you want to know about issues that are being addressed by city leaders all over America, we are the organization that you can learn and share your practices here in St. Louis and abroad. So thank you so much for welcoming me here. I will be at an event tonight at the St. Louis Regional Municipal Organization where Alderman Spencer is going to be welcomed as a member of the Board of Directors tonight. So if you guys have nothing else to do, you can hear me speak later tonight, but Alderman Spencer and President Reed will have to hear me again tonight. So thank you all for having me here and good luck on your deliberations today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, members of the Board, we're also accompanying him today is Ms. Shontae Byers. Did I pronounce it correctly? All right then, I pronounced it correctly to my right here. She's also here today from the National League of Cities. She's officially the Director and Member Service and Engagement. Please welcome her today.
Also just want to thank Clarence and National League of Cities for all that they do. I had an opportunity to go out and visit with them and talk to them about public safety issues, what modern cities are doing, smart cities and all that stuff. And there was so much information that they gave me at the meeting that I had with them. Thought to myself, it would do our entire Board a lot of good to have access to those resources and actively use them. So we're going to actively engage with National League of Cities so that we can better do the jobs that we work to do each and every day all across the city of St. Louis to the benefit of residents in the city. Alderman from the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. John, you want to come on up? We're here today, I've got a courtesy resolution to honor someone who's given a lot of time and effort to many, many civic causes in St. Louis, and that's John Sondag, the President of AT&amp;T Missouri. John is retiring after a 40-year career with AT&amp;T. He's been the President of AT&amp;T Missouri for, what, 10 years? Eight years? Eight years. All right? And, you know, I think many of you know John and the rest of his team at AT&amp;T who are here on a weekly basis. And just to highlight some of the wonderful things John's done and the impact he's had on St. Louis, if you've got a courtesy resolution, I've got a big copy of it somewhere here, but listen to this list of boards and commissions that John has served on in St. Louis because it's quite an impressive list. John's been a member of Civic Progress, the United Way, the Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis, the Regional Chamber, Backstoppers, Jean Slade's Girls and Boys Club, the St. Louis Zoo, the St. Louis Sports Commission, the Missouri Chamber of Commerce, the Kansas City Civic Council, the Hawthorne Foundation, the Greater St. Louis Area Boy Scout Council, the Muni Opera, the Missouri Partnership, the St. Louis Police Foundation, Concordance Academy, Jobs for America, and many, many more. That's just a short list of many of John's accomplishments and what he's done for not only our town, but for our state and for our partners over in Kansas City. He's been a wonderful friend, he's been a great civic leader. We're happy to have him in St. Louis, we're going to miss him. I understand he's retiring at the end of the month to spend time with his wife, Vicki, and your kids are grown up, right? But maybe you'll see them a little bit too? Good, good. So everybody, I'd hope we could honor our good friend, John Sondag, today.
Any further discussion? Alderman from 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Just want to say, John, I appreciate everything you've done over the years. John and I have a couple of mutual friends in common. And whatever little dealing I had through John or people who represent him have always done a great job. And I would ask the sponsor if he wouldn't mind adding my name to the resolution. I'd appreciate it. And John, whatever you decide to do, the best of luck to you in your future endeavors.
Alderman from the 17th.
President, not on the resolution, but something I thought was kind of noteworthy was something John was involved in with regard to Cortex project out in my ward. And as we began working on Cortex, one of the big challenges was site assemblage. You're trying to get a lot of, you know, different buildings all close together so that we can convert them to office space or lab space so that people can work together. And one of the real critical buildings out there was a building that was owned by AT&amp;T. And we had a number of buildings there owned by large entities. And if anybody's been involved in something like this, trying to track down the head of a large entity to see if you can buy a piece of property from them can be almost impossible. And so there was a fair amount of frustration on the Cortex board and everybody's kind of scratching their heads. And I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a high school friend of yours, Pat Bannister, who said, "Oh, I know John Sondag." And so, and I didn't, you know, kind of realized the connection at the time, but that John had become head of AT&amp;T Missouri, and so Pat called him up. And in short order, AT&amp;T decided to transfer ownership of that under very favorable terms, I think, given the circumstances, to Cortex. And that building now is what I refer to as the At Building, the At 4240 Building, which is just a spectacular rehab of historic space in Cortex. And but for John Sondag and, you know, some quiet whispering that went on some years ago, that project would have never happened. And I think that's a small example of John's civic involvement and that really flies under the radar screen. So John, thanks for your help on that and all your service over the years and cooperation. Thank you.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to express my gratitude to John for, you know, your many years of service. I met you first through your role as the Director of Community Affairs for AT&amp;T. And always a pleasure to work with you, and certainly, your leadership at AT&amp;T will be missed. And I think they'll be a very large hole in our community, our civic leadership community with you leaving that post. But hopefully, you know, the successor to your role will try and fill in mightily in that regard. But thank you again for all of your wonderful works in our community. It's very much appreciated.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I think Pat Bannister might have known him from, is that wonderful school that sits on Oakland, is that right? Class of, I want to say 73, 70?
71.
Oh, 71. And that would make him a SLU High man, okay? And I have to get up because otherwise I can't go home because I'm married to a SLU High man. The former Alderman from the 8th was a SLU High man. So you all kind of were in that same realm together. And I remember talking to my husband one day and he said, "Oh, I know the head of AT&amp;T." And I was like, "Right, right." He said, "Yeah, I did, I went to school with him." And I said, "Right, right." And he said, "I could call him up, Daryl and I, we all went to school together." Of course, he did. You guys have had a, the St. Louis University is a wonderful high school, is a wonderful place for people to go to school. It produced some wonderful people. I've been married to one for 30 years, but I know you and other people have done marvelous things out in the, in the city. And I will attribute some of that to the discipline and to the education that you got from St. Louis U High, and I want to thank you for all that you do in the City of St. Louis. And I don't go away, just retire and then come back with your other hats and caps on. Thank you so much.
Alderwoman from the 19th.
Good morning, thank you, President and members of the Board. So Chris and John and all the crew at AT&amp;T, they need to understand what your leadership has done for our community. It's been wonderful. I know a lot of times you probably wanted to say no, but you didn't. And you've helped so many organizations get to the next step. You've helped us launch a lot of new innovative projects that are helping a lot of people who are underemployed or undereducated to get them prepared for a better quality of life. You've been very busy economically, buying up companies, and so on a national level. You guys look good, but I know I will see you because you're not just going to sit down, you're going to still be involved. But I thank you for everything that you have helped us with in this city and in this region. And I look forward and pray for you to have some relaxation and enjoy part of your retirement. Thank you.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to also express my congratulations to you, John. I appreciate your service to the St. Louis community. I've known you since I've been down here, since 2003. You're a great leader, a great role model, and again, just thank you for your service. And Mr. Clerk, I'd like to be added to the resolution, please.
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the 1st, Alderman from the 16th, Alderwoman from the 6th. Would someone like to, Alderwoman from the 14th, would you like to move?
I move to make this resolution in bank.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 14th. Entertain a second on the 2nd and by Alderman from the 22nd that we make this resolution number 27 in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Mr. Clerk, please prepare another copy of the resolution in bank.
So noted.
John, I also want to just give you my thanks and also congratulations on 40 years of service to not just AT&amp;T, but to our community. Because you always operated outside of the walls of just the corporation and got involved in very important issues in our community to help us progress our community in a very positive manner. And as a father of four, I greatly appreciate it. I also appreciate the fact that you did not have a problem taking tough stances when it came time to take those tough stances. Sometimes we've been on different sides of the issues, but we've always understood that we were all working toward the better good. And serving on the Jean Slade's Boys Club with you, that was just a great experience. And again, I want to thank you for a job well done, 40 years of service. We have to give him a huge, huge round of applause. Let's give John another big round of applause. And to both John and Clarence, just to kind of let you understand what these resolutions are, these resolutions are the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when people research and look at the Renaissance and the rebirth of our city, and they read about this time, they'll read amongst those records John Sondag and know that we pause today in our deliberations to properly recognize you for your years of service, and they'll read about Clarence Anthony. So that your, people who, people who want to really truly understand our history, they will know the role that both of you have played in the rebirth of our city. So thank you and congratulations on everything that you've done.
Well, thanks to all the Aldermen. Alderman Kotar, thank you for initially sponsoring the resolution. Thank you, President Reed. You know, I was born in St. Louis County, and as Alderwoman Tyus mentioned, I had the honor of going to school at St. Louis U High. And for really first time, I really got to spend a lot of time in the city. I've been with the company, AT&amp;T, now 40 years. I'll be leaving next week, a week from today, but 35 of those 40 years were spent right here in downtown St. Louis. And, you know, I love the city, we have a great city, we have a great region. We've got issues we got to address, but every city and every town in this country does. But I know that with leadership like we have here and throughout the region, we will, we will move this region and the city forward. Talked, I know Alderman Rhodey mentioned about, you know, kind of working with kind of a public-private partnership deal that we worked with Cortex and the city. And I, I would just encourage everyone here, you know, the issues we got to face are not just something government can handle, it's not something the private sector can handle. But I think working together, we can. And I think the more that we can do that, the more that other parts of our region come and want to work with you all, I think the better we'll be. So it's been just outstanding honor really to get this resolution and really to have so many of you say such kind things about me. I have to say, when Jack was reading the, you know, the list of the boards and things I'm involved in, and they are a lot, but I have to say that I got a great staff, several of them are here. You know, we still have 5,500 employees in this area and about 9,000 in the state. And they're out working hard every day so that people like myself can go out and try to serve the community and represent AT&amp;T. So I appreciate everything that my staff does and appreciate them being here today. So I know it gets warm here, I want to kind of finish this up for you. So once again, thank you for, you know, today's recognition and good luck and, you know, God bless everyone, and let's, let's make St. Louis continue to be a great place to live and work.
Mr. President, members of the Board, it is my honor today to welcome to the City of St. Louis and present a resolution in his honor, Mr. Baile Dele Egioba. I was taught that art is the creative and imaginative use of imagination, and that imagination is defined as the conceptualization of an idea that has never wholly existed like that before. And so then, both the artist with imagination takes ideas that are not physical in the world and makes them something tangible of beauty and of benefit. Baile is one of those types of individuals. I'll report portions of the resolution in his honor. Whereas it has come to the attention of this honorable Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that Baile Dele Egioba is visiting St. Louis from May 20th through May 27th, teaching classes in African culture and drum making to St. Louis Public School students at the Promogia Academy located in the Vandaventer neighborhood of the 18th Ward. And whereas Mr. Egioba is a nationally-known African cultural teacher, drummer, drum and instrument maker based in Washington, D.C. And whereas for over 42 years, Mr. Egioba has promoted international sensitivity, cultural tolerance, human love and compassion through the understanding of African culture, drumming and drum making, instructing thousands of individuals from all walks of life and various communities. And whereas Mr. Egioba is the founder of Baile African Drum Works, which makes and promotes African instruments, but mostly facilitates workshops in African drum and drum making, dance and folklore, and whose educational programs are designed for adults as well as children, providing services in public schools, colleges, and corporate institutions. And whereas the services of Baile's Drum Works are designed to use African drumming and drum making to create cross-cultural appreciation, excite unity, bridge gaps, and make us all better and more compassionate and caring people. Nowfore, there be resolved by this honorable Board of Aldermen that we pause in our deliberations to welcome Mr. Baile Egioba to the City of St. Louis and to congratulate on, to congratulate him on his many years of service to this nation and to the City of St. Louis. Mr. Egioba is here this week teaching public school students at Promogia. And it has been both an exciting week for them as well both an exciting week for them as well as an informative one. He is a African drum maker, there are not that many in this country, who follows the tradition of drum making. This instrument making was not simply to make the instruments, but to use the ability of skills or the teaching of skills to help make a more ethical and caring person, not simply the teaching of skills. Here in America, we've had the experience of people with high skills but with very little ethics. We know that from the Tuskegee affair that happened in Tuskegee, Alabama, where very highly skilled professional medical doctors for over forty years tested secretly the syphilis disease on a whole community, very highly skilled individuals, not much ethics. The tradition of teaching African drum making, the tradition of teaching it teaches ethics and uses the skills as a way to teach ethics to make people a better, to make a person a better person in this world and more compassionate and caring one. Bayley Egioba continues that tradition. So the children are not just learning how to make drums, they're learning how to be better people, how to be more compassionate with each other, how to work in unity, how to care for one another, how to be individuals that would be good citizens in their community, and how to have pride in who and what they are. This week also marks the, what is called the African Liberation Day celebrations that was created by the African Union when various African countries began to be free from colonialism. So it is appropriate that we find him here in the city of St. Louis during this week, teaching children in the public schools how to be better individuals through the use of skills and crafts. As we were taught, art is the creative and imaginative use of imagination. So Bayley is one of those artisans as a drum maker and instrument maker. To come and to get something for him means you are liable to have a three-hour lecture about how to be a better person. Takes the time to talk to you about that, what it means to work in unity, what it means to care for others. He takes every opportunity to do that, whether you're trying to get out the door or not, he takes that opportunity. It is that type of instruction that can make a difference. It is that type of commitment that can help change this world, and these are one of those forces that we can feel in our communities helping to make things better. So it is my honor today to both have him here in the city of St. Louis. He had to come out of the class of teaching the youth, and he's going right back to it, but we were determined to get him here and to honor him today here formally at the city of St. Louis by providing him this resolution in his honor. Know that this now goes in the records of the city, and it is certainly our pleasure to have you here in our city, teaching what it means to be a better person through the instruction of African tradition, culture, drum making, and instrument making. We'd like to welcome Mr. Bayley Egioba.
Asante Sana. Thank you very much. I'm so honored and I'm humbled by this experience. It's something that I thought about for many years. You know, when I'm in Africa and I come to town, the king sends some people to say, why he hasn't come to visit me yet? So I had to go to the palace, visit the king, and we just sit there and drink beer. But in my travels in Africa, I always found myself in the king's palace or amongst the council of elders who are, irregardless of the political system, they are the ones who hold the foundation and provide governance going back many thousand years. And I'm speaking in Nigeria, West Africa. So I sat in on judiciary proceedings and some of the ancient ceremonies that were done to hold the people together. When I come here today at this moment, that's what it brings to mind for me, the many situations I've been in where all people were represented. And that's what I see here, and I'm impressed and I'm honored to be able to be here and see and meet some of you. So for, for this acknowledgement, I want to say, Asante Sana, thank you very much.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is called poaching. The Vandaventer neighborhood is not the only neighborhood that would be interested in having you come and give us your wisdom. I want to invite you to the Kingsway East or the Penrose neighborhood where I have Matthew Dickey at one end and Woll's Community Center at the other. At any time that you have any extra time, the young people and some of the seniors, I can't believe I'm calling myself a senior, such as myself, would love to be able to have you come and do classes in our community. So I'm, I'm going to follow after you when you get ready to leave here to give you my card so that we can have a conversation because I'm so impressed with what you, you're, you're doing. I've only been able to hear, I've never been to the continent, that's my dream. I've been to almost every island in the Caribbean, and they are really into steel drums also. But I've never had it explained the way the Alderman from the eighteenth did about what the meaning and the true meaning behind it and what it was. I just enjoy it. If you actually go down to Crown Candy in the fifth ward, the guy is out there all the time playing the steel drums, and I love it, and I can sit sometimes and just hear it. But to know that there's meanings that I don't know, and I'm constantly discovering things about the continent of Africa because I was so miseducated as a child and there was so much misinformation put out when I was growing up. And as I learn my mother country, how proud I am to know where people come from and the things that we, we have passed on in traditions for years and years and years. And I would love to sit at your knee and absorb some of that or be able to offer you maybe a couple of classes at either Matthew Dickey or Woll's Community Center to come do that. And I would like my name added to the resolution, please.
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
Any further discussion, any further discussion?
Mr. President, members of the board, where is it? There he is. I just want to prove to you all, I do in fact have a twin brother. He's standing right here. For those of you all who don't believe me. We may not look anything alike, but we did come out together. He has taken over forty, about forty years ago, a brother came and took classes with Bayley and learned drum making and instrument making, and I tagged along. And so then this marks, this, this year actually marks the fortieth anniversary when he began those classes back in nineteen seventy-eight. Just wanted you all to be able to prove that I did have a twin brother. Thank you. I just want to say that it wasn't my fault. I mean, we're twins, but it wasn't my fault.
Mr. President, could I have my name added to the resolution?
Mr. Clerk, please make note of that change.
And I just want to share with you that the Alderman from the eighteenth ward has been responsible for many years to make sure that our children knew and understand, understood their culture. My son was a part of a training program and he, you just molded him into knowing who he was. He had more confidence, and I have to just thank you and Sophia and others who gave your time because you didn't get any money for it, but you made sure that our children were on the right track. So I thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. With that, we return our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guests, did they just sneak out of here? I'm going to introduce them anyway. John Sandag, Craig Unrow, Cheryl Knobi, Leroy Grant, and Chris Pickle from AT&amp;T, and also my friend and general rabble-rouser, Jane Duker. Thank you.
Alderman from the sixth.
Mr. President, I'd like to welcome Anthony Lancia from AGC as my honored guest this morning.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd have to have as my guests this morning, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local Seventy-three, Lou Hamilton from Centrex, and Megan McBride from Kelly Group.
Any further introductions? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have from the Home Builders Association, Alex Sharp, and from the carpenters, Jeff Hansen.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth? Approval in the minutes.
We have none, Mr. President.
Report to city officials.
Copies of the items under six, A, B, and C have been placed in all of the Aldermen's mailboxes. From the office of the mayor, I, dear members of the board, I hereby withdraw my submission of the following individual for appointment to the Residence Inn Downtown St. Louis Community Improvement District, the appointment of Mr. Dale Rusatz, who resides in St. Louis County and whose term will expire on March eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to place Board Bill Ten, which is currently on the perfection consent calendar, on the informal calendar.
All right. Are you handling the Dale Rusatz?
Oh. I can while I'm standing.
Alderman from the sixth.
Mr. President, I move that we withdraw the mayor's appointment of Dale Rusatz to the Downtown St. Louis Community Improvement District.
By Alderman from the sixth, I maintain a second on that. Seconded by Alderman from the third, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dispense with line item seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items nine through ten, first reading board bills.
Board Bill Number Sixty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Coder, an ordinance to terminate and dissolve the Orpheum Theater Community Improvement District pursuant to the Community Improvement District Act, Section Sixty-seven, fourteen oh one through sixty-seven, fifteen seventy-five of the revised statutes of Missouri. That is the extent of first reading.
Reference to committee.
Board Bill Sixty-seven to housing and urban development and zoning. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Board Bill Forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance directing and the director of streets to change the thirty-two-hundred block of Sullivan from a one-way passage to a two-way passage and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Forty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the north side of Forest Park. Board Bill Number Sixty-three, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance directing the director of streets to make such changes in the present traffic pattern, controlling traffic on Greer, Dodier, and University in the thirty-five-hundred block of said streets between North Grand and North Garrison so that as reconfigured, the traffic pattern developed and in place as, as a result of the changes directed by this ordinance or as followed, namely, Greer, thirty-five-hundred block, traffic to flow two-way between North Grand and North Garrison. Dodier, thirty-five-hundred block, traffic to flow two-way between North Grand and North Garrison. University, thirty-five-hundred block, traffic to flow one-way southeast between North Grand and North Garrison. That is the extent of second reading, Mr. President.
We dispense with line item fourteen at the request of the Alderman from the first. Please place Board Bill Thirty-seven AA as, on the regular perfection calendar and also thirty-five as amended on the regular perfection calendar. And also make note that Board Bill Ten was placed on the informal calendar by its sponsor.
So noted, Mr. President.
Perfection consent.
Perfection consent. Board Bill Number Twenty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance repealing ordinance seven hundred eighty-seven and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently nonlicensed premises within the boundaries of the fourth ward liquor control district and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property in city block thirty-eight, thirty-eighty-four from J Industrial District and K Unrestricted District to the K Unrestricted District only at the seventy-five-hundred through eighteen South Broadway and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Number Three, sponsored by Alderman Volmer, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property in city block forty-seven, forty-one from A Single Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the A Single Family Dwelling District only at fifty-two oh one filer and containing an emergency Board Bill Number Forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance to provide for the borrowing of funds in anticipation of the collection of tax payments levied by the city for deposit in its general revenue fund for the calendar year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and remaining uncollected and other revenues remaining to be collected and deposited in the general revenue fund for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, all such revenues for the general revenue fund in the treasury of the city through the issuance by the city of its tax and revenue anticipation notes Board Bill Number Forty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the estimate and apportionment authorizing and directing the director of airports and the controller, owner and operator of Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute the Airport Terminal Services Inc. space permit AL zero seven one between the city and airport terminal services, granting to the permit to certain rights and privileges in connection with the occupancy and use of the premises containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of the perfection consent calendar, Mr. President.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent Alderman from the nineteenth, would you like to handle the motion on the perfection consent calendar?
Mr. President, members of the board, I make a motion for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, I maintain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman, Alderman from the third, Alderman from the fourteenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Number Thirty-five AA, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer Ogilvy, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Rice, and Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance pertaining to campaign contribution limits, amending ordinance seven zero three five seven, sections one and three, and repealing section four of said ordinance to acknowledge newly passed State of Missouri maximum limits on campaign contributions and to decrease maximum limits on decan, camp, campaign contributions for local elections as provided here herein. Board Bill Thirty-seven AA, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy.
Thirty-five A, Alderman from the twentieth. Alderman, Alderman from the fifteenth, or one of the cosponsors, would you like to handle the bill for it, Alderman from the twentieth? Board Bill Thirty-five as amended.
I can get us started until we find her.
All right. Would you like to move, move for a perfection of Board Bill Thirty-five as amended?
Yes, I would like to move for perfection of Board Bill Thirty-five as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. the twenty-fifth. Alderwoman from the first?
So the board, if the Alderwoman from the fifteenth will yield, please.
Alderwoman from the fifteenth, will you yield the question to the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes.
Please proceed, Alderwoman.
And I understand that you are standing in, but you are one of the cosponsors, and that's one of the responsibilities when you co-sponsor, you have to answer questions. I... Stop it. Okay, I am reading on page one of five, it says, whereas the Missouri State Constitution was amended in November of 2016 to limit campaign contributions to $2,600. That's line twelve and thirteen on page.
Which page is that again?
Page one of five, lines twelve and thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
You're with me?
I think so. Say, sir.
It's not a hard question, I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Say that page number again?
Page one.
I don't think I'm in the right place. Oh, okay. I thought you said page three, lines two.
Page one.
Yes.
Lines twelve and thirteen.
Got it.
Okay, so that says, the Missouri Constitution was amended in November of 2016 to limit campaign contributions to $2,600. Then when you go over to page two of five, line sixteen and seventeen says, the state of Missouri does not, at present, specify a maximum limit on campaign contributions. So I was kind of confused with that, and I was hoping you could clarify that.
That's for municipal elections. So, the Missouri State Constitution amendment that happened was only applies to state level. It doesn't apply to local level.
So then that should say, limit on campaign contributions to local elections is what it should say, because that's not how it reads right now.
I mean, I think it could be amended to say that, the... Because basically, it only... What we passed at the ballot, it only applies to the state level, not to the local level.
I'm not opposed to this, and if it's some kind of emergency, but I would make a friendly amendment to say, to add that to local elections, because it's kind of in contradiction when you're reading twelve and thirteen versus sixteen and seventeen.
The sponsor is here now, so I am more than willing to hand it over.
And you will never again want to put me as co-sponsor, okay?
And see if she is amenable to that change.
No, you don't have the Florida Alderwoman from the fifteenth still. Alderwoman from the first, would you like to inquire of the Alderwoman from the twentieth, or would you like to continue with Alderwoman of the fifteenth?
What they decided over there, so.
Alderwoman from the fifteenth, could you please state what the decision was?
Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Okay, that's fine with me.
So the Alderwoman from the twentieth, will you yield the question to the Alderwoman from the first? Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, Alderwoman, what I had asked the... Your co-sponsor was, and what I pointed out, is that on line, page one of five, lines twelve and thirteen, it talks about the Missouri State Constitution was amended in November of 2016 to limit campaign contributions to $2,600, okay? But then when you go to page two of five, it says that the state of Missouri does not, at present, specify a maximum limit on campaign contributions, and I thought that it should to be correct, say, on local elections, okay? And so it was just a friendly amendment to change it so that it was correct. Otherwise, it reads incorrectly.
Is that what...
And I was...
What exactly is the question?
If you will be amenable to a friendly amendment to just say local elections on there, so that it would be clear that we're... That the two are not in opposition of one another.
I would absolutely be amenable to that friendly amendment, and would be happy to help organize it if that's appropriate, or if you have something organized already.
Sometimes with a friendly amendment, we don't have to reduce it right unless somebody insists, okay? Now, if somebody insists, we can't do that. But it's just to make clear.
No, you're exactly right.
I think in this case, considering it doesn't alter the real function of the ordinance, it's simply clarifying in the findings section, I think we should be amenable to accepting the friendly amendment as is, as suggested by the Alderwoman from the first.
All right, yeah. Please proceed, Alderwoman.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to make... Offer a friendly amendment to Board Bill thirty-five AA as amended to page two, line seventeen to add in local elections.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the first that we amend Board Bill thirty-five as amended.
Second.
Page two, line seventeen, to add the statement, "In local elections." No, no, they're not. If it's a friendly amendment, it could be made just like this, unless... Now, Alderman, Alderman, if you would want that, you could request that, and... It's been moved by Alderwoman from the first, could you please restate your amendment one more time?
Mr. President, members of the board, I would make a friendly amendment that Board Bill thirty-five AA, page two...
Line seventeen.
Line seventeen include the words after campaign contributions, "In local elections."
"In local elections." It's been moved by Alderwoman from the first, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. There's been a request... Opposed? Opposed by a vote, you adopted amendment number one to Board Bill thirty-five as amended. Just as a reminder, if you would want roll call, or if you want to change the way the vote is about to happen, you have to state it prior to me putting the vote. Once I put the vote, there's only one thing that can happen, and that's people vote yes or no. That's the only things that can happen after I put the vote. You cannot add anything after that. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President and members of the board, I just wanted to make a statement about the limits for campaign funds. In the last twenty, twenty-two years, we have changed it at least three times. I know one time, I was on my way back from campaigning in Iowa, and it changed, and by the time we got... Two days later, the state disrupted and changed it back. So, worrying about whether or not someone can raise funds is not the primary thing when you talk about elections. You see, you can run a good campaign if you are a good qualified candidate, and you can win without having a lot of money. And so, getting excited about this, I'm not, because I do believe it'll change in the next three to six months. But most of us know that it's about what you do before you run the campaign. Some of us have run campaigns and spent little to no money. I ran a citywide campaign with $980 and won with almost 22,000 votes. So it's about who you are, the work you put in, and whether or not people trust and believe in you when you're running a campaign. So it's not always... And it's not always about the money. So you worried about stopping people who do have the ability to raise funds, that's not going to stop them if they're good candidates and they do their job. And you really can't rely on the state, because they have flip-flopped on this so many times, it's ridiculous. So, I just had to put that out there for the public, so the public can understand what happens with this. Yes, we've done it now, we've adopted what the state had, we didn't have to, but I know that makes folks feel good, but I don't support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twentieth?
Mr. President, is this discussion on the amendment or on the bill itself?
We've already adopted the amendment, so it's on the bill itself.
Thank you, Mr. President. In closing, I'd like to just point out that when we passed... We did pass a local campaign finance limit in 2016. At that time, the state had no limits, and we did pass a $10,000 limit on local election with some increasing on an annual basis for cost of living. It becomes a little bit cumbersome at some point. In that time, since the passage of our local campaign finance bill, the state has adopted a limit of $2,600 per election. This was done by the voters of the state of Missouri, seventy percent of whom agreed that campaign contributions ought to be limited. Locally here in the city of St. Louis, seventy-six percent of St. Louis city voters agreed with that constitutional amendment to limit campaign contributions. The city of St. Louis is often more progressive than the state of Missouri, that's a given. And in this way, in the way of campaign finance, we should be at least as progressive as the state of Missouri and our neighboring municipality of St. Louis County in adopting common sense limitations on what can be contributed to our campaigns to run for office. This is an effort in getting massive, major funding donors out of local elections and getting them... And having our local elections be run by the citizens of St. Louis who could contribute at a more reasonable level than what we currently have on the books at $10,000 per campaign. And with that, I ask for your favorable consideration. Again, this is just aligning the city of St. Louis with the state of Missouri. The governor has a limit of $2,600 per donor per election cycle, and the city of St. Louis should be no different.
Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Just want to make one statement so people out here don't get the wrong impression. It's not $2,600 total that you can raise, it's 2,600 per person who wants to donate. If you know thirty people donates $2,600, that's a pretty good fundraiser. Thank you. There's a lot of people out there might think it's $2,600 total.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the twentieth would yield again, so.
Alderwoman from the twentieth, you yielded Alderwoman from the first.
Absolutely.
Please proceed, Alderwoman.
Alderwoman, and also, this $2,600, is that per campaign, a year, or is that per campaign?
That is right. So what we've done is taken the existing municipal ordinance that's already on the books and changed one thing.
From 10,000.
The number, from 10,000, to match the state number of $2,600. This should really be a no-brainer here. We should be at least as progressive again as the state of Missouri. There's no reason that an alderman should be able to have larger donations than the governor of the state of Missouri. There's absolutely no reason that we should allow that. And so, in that regard, I do agree that there could be much more that could be done, as the Alderwoman from the nineteenth pointed out, but this is most certainly a step in the right direction. And saying no to this, allowing larger donations to continue in our local elections really has no purpose.
And it does not... If you already have gotten big fat cats to give you $10,000, it will not take away from the money that you've been given.
That's correct. It's not retroactive. In committee, we decided to amend it with a friendly provision to make this only effective after the April election, allowing the current election cycle to continue under the same rules that we have applied today.
And do you know, has these... Because one of the problems we had is when Citizens United came out, okay? And has the state law been taken to court, and has that been... Do you know if that's been tested against Citizens United at all? Do you know?
Again, this is just... This is only altering one word in our existing ordinance, but I do not know of any court cases pertaining to that specifically at this time.
All right. I rise in support of Board Bill thirty-five AA. I have never agreed with Citizens United. I thought that was a very unfortunate case. When you decide that corporations are the same as citizens, I cannot imagine in any... What world do they think that's what our forefathers meant when they talked about people being able to be involved? This was some twisted statement of facts and law, and I don't know how the Supreme Court came... I've read the case, and I still don't understand how they had come to that conclusion. I would not want anybody to give me more than that amount of money, and I've never, I think, and no one has ever given me that kind of money, and I wouldn't want it. I think when they bring big checks like that, they expect undue influence on you, even if they say they don't. When I first started running, somebody gave... Several people gave me $2,000 checks, and I felt the need to say to them, "Now, you know I'm still going to vote in my... The way it's been in my community's best interest." And this was people close to me. And I... So I do know that when people give you money, some people really are wanting you to do the best, but there are other people who are a little farther removed from you, and they expect... They expect to influence politicians. And it is not fair when you're out there running a local race. I try to... In fact, when I came back here, I raised every dime except for one campaign contribution within my ward. I loved it. I love when I do that, because that means I report to the people in my community. And the one person who gave me something other was a longtime family friend for a long time, so I don't see how you need this kind of money. If you can, that's fine, but $2,600 per person, as the Alderman from the twelfth said, if you've got thirty people that'll give you $2,600, woo-woo for you, but for the rest of us, you've got to get out, you've got to knock doors, you've got to know the people, you've got to make sure you have contact with your community. You just can't have a big pile of money and come in and run politics as usual. So I think this is a good board bill, and I remember when we did put $10,000 down, and so people have had time to become accustomed to that, and I do think that it's a good idea to give leeway to April since the election is coming up. So all of you all who are worried, run out and have big fundraisers and get your stockpile of money. But for the rest of us, who I couldn't get that anyway, I wouldn't want it, it is a fair amount of money, and thank you for introducing this board bill.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderwoman from the fifteenth and seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we perfect Board Bill number thirty-five as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Board Bill thirty-seven.
Board Bill thirty-seven as amended, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance pertaining to the authorization of a mutual aid agreement between the city and St. Clair County, Illinois, for St. Clair County, Illinois law enforcement officer employees to provide law enforcement services and activities on metro link property within the city limits containing definitions, a separability clause, and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill thirty-seven as amended.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill thirty-seven.
Moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the first, any discussion?
This particular board bill, this particular board bill authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with... Thank you. With St. Clair County and the city of St. Louis, that would allow their law enforcement officers, from understanding from the testimony from the Public Safety Director, who are already on the travel on the metro link, to allow them to detain individuals who are doing criminal acts up on the metro link. It gives... It allows for a spelled-out and understanding of what their behavior can be. They cannot arrest anyone, but simply detain individuals and then call the St. Louis Police Department when they're within the boundaries of the city of St. Louis. The Public Safety Director testified at the meeting that this does not have to be done with the county, because they're still within the jurisdiction of the state of Missouri, and so that's already covered. But to allow the officers from Illinois to be able to do this... But to allow the officers from Illinois to be able to do this would require this agreement. That's what the board bill does. It authorizes the city to enter into this agreement.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the 18th, seconded by the alderwoman from the first that we perfect Board Bill 37 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of the perfection calendar, Mr. President.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 46, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, an ordinance renewing the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District and containing separability clause, effectiveness, and emergency clauses. Board Bill number 42, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to $4 million of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund for the purpose of making funds available to address Cold Water Creek emergency repairs, stabilized banks, and channel, containing a separability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number 43, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing a First Amendment to Section 1 of the Airfield Building and Environs Project, Ordinance 70617, which authorized a multi-year public work and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, increasing the total estimated cost of the 19, of, cost of the airport building and environs projects by $4 million to $19 million, adding a new project to the list entitled Cold Water Creek Emergency Repairs, Stabilized Banks, and Channel, authorizing a first supplemental appropriation in the total amount of $4 million from the Airport Development Fund into the airport building and environs projects containing a separability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill number 44, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Second Amendment to Lease Agreement AL 222 between the city and MHS Travel and Charter, containing a separability clause and an emergency clause. That is the extent of the third reading consent calendar, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by the alderman from the 18th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coder, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bakaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohen, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman 26 aye votes, Mr. President.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
We have none, Mr. President.
Report of enrollment committee.
Board Bills number 46, 42, 43, and 44.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his First reading resolutions.
Resolution number 33, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Mohammed, and Alderman Bakaro, the Board of Aldermen amends its rules so as to add Rule Number 98 under the title of miscellaneous rules so as to receive Rule 98 nominations by the mayor to boards, commissions, councils, or agencies, or other public or quasi-public bodies.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the first reading, Resolution Number 33.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for Resolution 33 to be sent to Rules Committee, where I have a committee substitute that I would like to introduce.
Okay. It's been moved by the alderwoman from the first that we send Resolution Number 33 to Rules, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 16th. Any further discussion on that assignment? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolutions, Mr. President.
Hold on a second, Alder. Alderwoman from the first, you had something further?
Never mind. I was just irritated. Right. That, I just want the mayor's office to knock off the misinformation they're putting out, because if they don't knock it off, I have 20-something years' worth of history. You don't want me to come out and start bringing it. This is something I've been very passionate about since the '90s, and this is something we should have addressed, because we're not doing advice and consent. So if they keep putting out stuff, then I will put out something that they don't like.
All right, thank you, Alder. Second reading.
The mayor's reappointments to the Resident Inn Downtown Community Improvement District Commission.
Alderwoman from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we take the recommendation from the Neighborhood Development Committee for the appointments to the Residence Inn Improvement District.
Do you have the list that was approved?
I don't know if it's on our desks, but the, if it's not, I'll just put it on the memorial calendar.
Don't want to hold it over until next week.
That's fine.
Hold it over to next week. Ms. Lane, some fish business.
We have none, Mr. President.
Announcements.
Monday, May 28th, Memorial Day, the office will be closed. Wednesday, or Tuesday, May 29th, the Ways and Means Committee will have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, May 30th, the Ways and Means Committee will meet at 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, May 30th, Neighborhood Development will meet at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Public Safety will meet at 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, or Thursday, May 31st, Ways and Means will meet at 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. Friday, June 1st, the full board will meet at 10:00 a.m. in chambers.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk, I actually would like to move the Neighborhood Development Committee meeting from May 30th to June 13th at 9:00 a.m. That committee hearing is, our Neighborhood Development Committee is going to attempt to dissect some of the issues with Paul McKee and the city of St. Louis, the relationship with the city of St. Louis, and get updates from various city departments, including SLDC, the Building Division, the Forestry Department, the Health Department, and others. You know, as the news continues to unfold with various issues pertaining to Paul McKee, I called this meeting on May 30th to, you know, address some of those concerns and get more information in terms of the administration and their plan to move things forward. I know that many of my colleagues who are on Ways and Means have expressed an interest to attend this hearing and be part of it, so I want to be respectful of them. Also, there is a lot of information to digest as it keeps unfolding, so I want to make sure that my committee has the appropriate information before them to review before we actually start having interviews with folks from the various city departments that touch this project. So in that respect, I'm actually going to reschedule the meeting for June 13th to allow for more time and participation from our colleagues and also members of our community.
So the meeting has been moved?
Moved from May 30th to June 13th at 9:00 a.m.
All right, thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would just like to say we have Memorial Weekend coming up next few days. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and a safe weekend, and please remember the veterans that served in the United States. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the third.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, this weekend, we'll be having our first camping in Hyde Park event. It'll actually be starting tomorrow at about 4:00 p.m. It'll go into Saturday at about 5:00 p.m. the next morning, I mean, the next afternoon. So if you have the time, once again, please come on out. We still are accepting tents. If you can help out, get a tent, sponsor a tent for the kids, it'd be nice. We also have had a lot of people help out with the things that were needed, so I certainly appreciate every member of the board that's helped out and all of the sponsors that have helped out. And tomorrow should be an amazing day. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the aldermen from the 4th and 21st be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by the alderman from the 18th, seconded by the alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until June 1st, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by the alderman from the 18th, seconded by the alderman from the 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand adjourned.